I would like to call to order the January 25th meeting of the Needham School Committee. And first, I will ask if there is anyone in the public either on this call or in the audience who would like to make a public comment. If you're on the Zoom call, if you could use the raise hands feature, I will call on you. And I will point out that our vice chair, Mr. Spangler, is attending by Zoom, so any votes will be roll call votes No one looking to speak out there. I don't see any. Oh, wait, a couple more participants Okay, seeing no one wishing to speak, I will close public comments for this meeting and turn this over to the superintendent, if you would like to.
You can do this.
Okay. So we'll move next to school committee chair and subcommittee updates. I do not have any myself. Anybody here? Matt, any updates? No? Okay, moving right along now to Dr. Gudicant, superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we have a special treat, and that is to recognize and honor another group of young people from Needham who have been distinguished with an award. It doesn't often happen to a school community, and it is a rare occurrence for it to occur twice in one academic year. That award happens to be the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association Sportsmanship Award, and this time for our boys soccer team. As you know, the girls volleyball team received this accolade earlier, and to have the boys now receive it is pretty phenomenal. So, if I may, I would ask our coaches and our captains to come up to the table, or tables, if you would please. And just as a way, as a little bit of background here, what we're going to do is just make one or two comments, and then I will turn it over perhaps to our coach, head coach Odeyerna, for a comment. And anything one of our captains might want to say, and then turn it over to the school committee for any questions or comments. And then when we are done, I would like to have everyone and the school committee over in this corner with Mr. Seacott, so that we can take a photo. And at that time, if you would like to take the photo without your mask, I think we can do that. So, congratulations to the boys soccer team. This is, as I said, a pretty extraordinary feat to be honored in such a way. And what I, one of the things I, you may not know, but I'll let you know, that I interview all of your teachers when they're hired and administrators, and I also interview specifically varsity athletic coaches. I don't interview, have an opportunity for all the assistant coaches, because we have so many amazing assistants. The reason I interview the varsity athletic coaches, and I recall interviewing Mr. O for this position, and this is at the end of the process, is because I want to know what they're bringing, if you will, to the game, and what they're bringing to the district to support young people. One of the things I tell coaches is that I don't really care if you win a championship, but I am interested in you perhaps being honored with a sportsmanship award. Because I believe that if you can learn to work together, show discipline, good spirit, camaraderie, and be role models, the championships will follow. And they don't follow every year, of course, but they do ultimately follow, if not in that game, in your life. So, I know Coach Odeyerna was one of those folks who very clearly could articulate why sportsmanship is important. And obviously, your presence here and the fact that you've been honored by the MIA, and that you've been supported by your families, and your teachers, and your other coaches, and of course, that you have that spirit inside of you is an indication that it's well deserved. So, congratulations. And Coach O, if you want to say a word or two, and then if there's a captain who might want to say something, and then we'll turn it over to the school committee to see if they have any questions.
Sure. Thanks, Dr. Gudicant. I actually remember that interview vividly.
[laughing]
Now, almost eight years ago. But, yeah, I think sportsmanship, attitude, respect is something that is a cornerstone of our program, and we talk about it all the time. And it's something that we kind of build off of, and we think about playing with class all the time, and that's what we talk about a lot. And it's nice when you can do that while also being very successful in the field. We're blessed in this community of having a very strong soccer program, and we had a tremendous year on the field, both from a success and winning standpoint, as well as from an attitude, respect, sportsmanship standpoint. So, I'm super proud of these boys, and they should be proud of themselves. As I said to their parents in the email, and I announced it to the families, that the parents should be proud as well. I said kudos to them, because these are a great group of kids, are, you know, a product of their parents and a product of this community. And so I think it's just a great representation of what Needham is all about, class and success. And so, that's where I stand on that. So, thanks for having us here. I appreciate that.
I will also just add that not only are they a product of their families, and of their own personal initiative, and the support of their teachers and coaches, I think for Needham, which has invested a lot of resources and time and energy in developing the social and emotional learning strengths of our students, this is another way in which those skills manifest themselves. And in this case, this year, twice, which I said is exceptional, extraordinary. So, that investment in your social and emotional learning, your athletic prowess, and your academic growth is benefiting you and this community. Is there a captain who wants to speak up?
Yeah, sure.
Why don't you, why don't you, the three of you introduce yourself real quickly?
I'm Mac Turner.
I'm Peter Spielman.
And I'm Marcus Trugge.
I think just, to get an award like this, it's something that I'm very proud of as a leader of this team. And, you know, every day, we go out to the field, we're pushing each other to be better soccer players, but we're also pushing each other to be better people. And that's something really valuable, and I'm just very proud and grateful to be part of a team that's like this.
Captain want to say?
Yeah, I can go.
Could you move the microphone over to you?
Kind of like what you said earlier, this award kind of resembles our, like, coaches, both of our coaches, and our culture and environment that we are in. We kind of, kind of like Mac said, we push ourselves each day, practice and games. And that, not just for us three, but this award means a lot for all of us, as it's not just a championship, but it's something that, something that means much deeper. And, yeah.
I'd also like to credit part of it due to, like, the whole Needham program, because we all grew up in Needham, and we go through the schools and the soccer program, and to all products of that. So, I think part of that goes, part of this sportsmanship award comes from that, and we all grow up together. And so I think that says a lot about the town, that we can all grow up and develop these skills.
Both types of skills, on the playing field and interpersonally, and with competing with another team, which is outstanding. Probably maintain your schoolwork, too.
Would you like to introduce our other coach, and any other coaches?
Oh, yes, okay.
Yeah, so Assistant Coach Jake Miskin, who is, works at our SUNY Williams School currently, and is also a former student, a graduate of Needham High School, which is really exciting. He's actually on one of the first teams I ever coached as a ninth grade coach way back in the day, so.
Wow.
Yeah. And then, the whole team's here, or not the whole team's here. We're missing a few guys that are playing basketball today, or training programs and stuff, but we got the majority of the team. And it's, you know, Dylan is a member of the team as well, a future captain, actually. I think Noah's, Noah, our other captain for next year, is on the basketball team, so he's not here tonight, but, so, yeah.
I wonder if any of my colleagues would like to ask a question or make a comment? Besides wow, it's pretty impressive. Michael.
Thank you. Congratulations. You don't need to, for me, you've heard it from a lot of folks, and it's incredibly well-earned on all levels. You mentioned growing up in town and youth soccer, and are there things, one thing I think is terrific is to the extent that you and others can kind of reconnect with some of the coaches and the people who are involved in the youth programs, because that's the example, you know, the kids are going to look at you. And I don't know if that, you have the opportunity to do that, but, you know, you go off to college, and you're not going to be around, you're not hanging around the younger kids, but the extent that you guys can connect, I just, that kind of success on both levels, I hope is inspiring, you know, just like maybe it was to you when you knew older kids. And I don't know if you have a lot of opportunity to do that, or there's something we all can do to help facilitate the connections between, you know, high school students and high school athletes and the younger kids in our town.
Liz.
Again, congratulations. I think to have this award twice is really exciting. I'm wondering, from the captains, if you had to give advice to another team, like how to build the kind of community that can win a sportsmanship award, what would you say? What are the factors that made you all win this award?
So, I think the main, like, important quality of our team this year that allowed us to win this award was basically how friendly we were with each other. We kind of could each hang out with, any one of us on the team, either that was soccer-wise or just outside of school, which kind of allowed for a mutual respect between every one of us, which was great to see, whether it was like a sophomore respecting a senior or vice versa. So, I think that was the main aspect or quality that allowed us to win this award.
Other, sorry, Mike.
To go along with my colleagues here, again, congratulations, and to have this happen two times for Needham is really exciting. I'm the parent of two boys myself who are very active in the Needham sports program, including soccer. And the number of families who were there for, especially with the playoff run, and just sort of the word of mouth and the excitement, but also sort of the inspiration and the leadership that you provided, don't go that sort of thinking like, to Michael's comments of sort of like the youth and what they're looking towards. They certainly, the youth certainly looks to you as role models. And for those that I know who are sort of the ball boys on the sides, sort of manning things out of bounds, we're really excited and really inspired by the season and the productivity, not just in terms of how successful you were, but also certainly with your sportsmanship. So, certainly well done, and it's definitely recognized amongst the community.
Anyone else? Dylan, do you, I pick on him sometimes.
Yeah.
If he wants to say something.
Well, definitely just to speak to the character that the community brings around sports, and especially soccer in this case, is that, like, both Mr. Grease and, yeah, like Mr. Grease said, is that the community does look up to us as role models, and it's great to be able to win an award like this and set a precedent for the future, so that as we continue to grow and the younger generation, like, like mentioned, comes to playoff games and sees us perform, that they can bring it up and so to speak, keep this award in the community, and keep the community, not only in soccer, but as a whole, as one that is really looked at with high honors. So, just to speak, that speaks to the character of the players and the coaches, and really the community as a whole. And so I think that it is really fitting, and that we are really proud to receive something like this of such a high honor.
As it should be. Do we have to call you captain at school committee meetings now? It strikes me that we talk all the time at this table about curricular and academic and needs, and also social and emotional needs during this really weird time we've had over the last two years. And for you to, during this challenging time, be able to meet, to practice, to excel, and also do it in, as you said, mutually respectful way, is outstanding. I really enjoyed seeing teams come here, and it's, I think, very impressive how many teams have shown up at this meeting having won the sportsmanship award. So, really fun to see the championship, but really fun to see you having pulled this off during a time when you couldn't practice as you normally would have done, when you couldn't be together as you normally would have done. And I think it's really a lot to be said for all of you. So, anyone else have something like to add? I just, it's one of the things we really enjoy is having you here. Should we do a photo?
Just a round of applause.
Pardon me?
Round of applause and congratulations.
Absolutely. I forgot that, because I kept starting to clap earlier.
Madam Chair, I think the entire school committee, Mr. Seacott, the team, over here in this corner, we're going to try to make that work.
You heard the man.
Your choice about the master.
One more, two more, three more.
Thank you, Mary.
Not bad, Lamy, not bad. You're getting good at it.
Okay. Any more comments? Dr. Gudicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Congratulations. We move then to our consent agenda, and the items on our consent agenda tonight are meetings, minutes of the meetings, excuse me, of October 26th, November 2nd, and November 16th. Does anyone wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? There being no objection, these items are adopted by unanimous consent. We're now moving into a rich group of discussion items. Seems like all of our meetings have had pretty heavy lifting items. The first thing being middle school and high school program of studies. Dr. Gudicant?
Thanks, Madam Chair. A couple things here. You have in your packet for your consideration this evening, not for your vote, but for your consideration, the middle school program of studies for grade six through eight, and the high school program of studies. The middle school program of studies really does not have substantive changes. Some of those occurred last year, for example, when we re, kind of oriented the math program, among some other things. There, there is a highlighted description about a support program that's actually been in place for many years. Finally, the team decided to articulate it in the program of studies. And there is a minor change regarding music program. For that reason, I thought this evening that we would focus our effort and energy and attention on the high school program of studies that both has some new offerings and also has reformatted the program of studies to make it more accessible for families. In part, that's due to feedback from the school committee over years, and also from families at the high school and the staff. Allison Kubber Argent Terry, who is kind of the guardian of this project, I think that's fair to say, that's what Aaron Seacott has told me, is here this evening, so thank you, Ellie. And Mr. Seacott are both here to share highlights with you, and then respond to any questions that you may have. And I'm happy to respond to any questions about the middle school program of studies. Please come on up. And this will be on your next agenda as a voting item, if you were able to vote at that time. Okay, so, Mr. Seacott, Kubber Argent Terry.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us.
Thanks for being here.
I sit next to probably the person who's most instrumental in having Needham High School run as smoothly as it does. So, I'm glad that she's sitting at the school committee and getting some public attention. It's often quiet work that she does behind the scenes, and I think this program of studies is a perfect illustration of that. It drives so much of what we do on a day-to-day basis. It is the core of what we do, and without Allison and the very collaborative work that she leads, we wouldn't have such a strong program. So, thank you, Allison. She's going to talk a little bit about some of the kind of formatting changes and structural changes that we have in place for the coming year. And I'm just going to highlight a few of the aspects of the new courses. For those of you who are at home, who may not have a chance yet to see some of the new offerings, what I think they represent is the real creativity and effort amongst the staff in efforts to meet the student needs, and to continue to provide rich and challenging opportunities that stretch some of the experiences that students can have. They also, some of the items that you see in your packet, just simple housekeeping, sort of. We want to make sure that the titles of our courses, the explanations of the courses really convey the core experience that our students are going to have. So, as a student or as a parent is looking at it, we are able to convey that as clearly as we can. And so each year, we have a few just tweaks, two titles and such, so you see a couple represented there. In the newer course offerings, I want to highlight just a few things. We have a really outstanding theater teacher who joined us at the start of this year. She's been working with us in different capacities prior to this year, but now coming on to the formal role, and has been able to provide, I think, a new lens to our program, and stepped back and kind of thought about, what's the sequence, and what are we trying to offer for our students? And so what you see now with the two different theater programs, I think, really are addressing the interests and needs for our students, both pulling in new students with the introductory course, and making it clear that this is an introductory course, and then allowing students who are more invested and excited for the concept to be able to dive a little bit more deeply into it. Additionally, we have a number of courses that are drawing from the various media that I think are most common mediums for us to be communicating. We have a digital media, a social media for social change, combating digital misinformation, all coming from three different courses, three different subject areas, and highlighting different aspects, really different experiences, but all recognizing that this is at the heart of how we're interacting with each other. And so we want to make sure that we're thoughtful about those engagements with the various media forms, and using them in effective and appropriate ways. Additionally, data science is a new course that we're offering this year. It's something that we've talked about as I've joined you in previous meetings. I think everybody recognizes the importance of enhancing our own skills with data science, and to be able to provide that explicitly for students, I think, is a real, a great step for us. And then we have a range of courses, things like geology, biotech promoters, advanced ceramic portfolio, three really different areas that, again, are reflective of both the range of talents we have within our building for our students and our staff. And we're able to meet those needs collaboratively through some of the fine course offerings that we're going to be able to provide. Last thing I'll highlight before I turn it over to Allison, is the last portion of what you see is the 10IP program. Many of you are familiar with our ninth grade interdisciplinary program. It's now been running for, we're in the middle of our second year. It's really an outstanding opportunity to, as I see it, draw from some of the best elements of the middle school model in a high school setting. So, we have four content area teachers with a fifth special education teacher who are working very closely on enhancing the connection between the experiences students are having from one class to another. So, unlike a common high school experience, it's not an isolated scenario where you leave English and don't think about English again as you're sitting in your math class. These classes are interdisciplinary in nature, so the, the planning is cohesive and connected. The projects are as well, and it's just a really rich, exciting opportunity that we're providing for our students. The 10IP program now takes that extension. We've got a group of teachers who've been working together for just about a year now, with, planning for the beginning of this for the fall of the coming year. They'll continue to be doing a lot of planning over the summer to make sure that we have the same kind of rich, fun, exciting, connected experiences in the 10th grade year as we do already in the ninth grade year. Plant a little seed for the future. We are also working on extending that concept into our junior year. While we recognize that as students get into the junior and senior years, they are looking to kind of specialize and get a little bit more focused in certain areas, which means we want to adjust a little bit of how we're approaching it. So, the courses we'll talk about next year are a combination of English and social studies and math and science, which gives a little bit more flexibility for the students to be able to choose the range of courses they may want to as juniors, while still providing those connected experiences that we know are so meaningful for the students. So, quick highlight of what we're going to be providing in addition to an already outstanding program of studies that looks a lot different this year. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Allison to talk a little bit about some of the thinking there.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. I think, I'd just like to recognize today, and hopefully you can see in terms of the design and the format of the program of studies this year, our commitment to equity and inclusivity for all of our students. A couple of years ago, a group of teachers got together and looked at some research and best practices around language accessibility, and put out a guidebook for our whole staff, and did training on multiple levels with our staff, including administrators, around language accessibility and the communications that we are putting out. So, we've been taking small steps, even in our communications, but felt that this was a good way to get to the majority of our students and families, in a really small step, and making sure that everyone has equitable access to the curriculum and the programs that we offer. So, in working with our high school leadership team, and especially Jen Regret, who's our science department chair, and just looking at how we could improve the course selection process and our communication, and, and the information that we're putting out there, she and I connected with Kitty Maffey, who's in a new role this year. She was an English teacher at the high school, and now she's an inclusive practices coach at the high school, and has been working with a lot of our staff, myself included, and doing trainings with our new staff as well. And basically, just spent some time reformatting and looking at the different best practices around language accessibility, making sure that things are linked, some small steps, increasing white space, and paying attention to font, decreasing clutter, things like that. So, some pretty small steps. It did double the number of pages, but I think it's a small price to pay for a better, a better document in program of studies. So, we're excited about that. I'm definitely happy to put it out there, and I think it's a big step in making sure that we're communicating what we have to offer to students and families in an easier way to navigate. Yeah.
Anything you would particularly like to highlight, or are you ready for questions? I found this fascinating to read, and, yes, wanted to go back to high school. Recently saw a picture of my high school teachers, you know, biology, physics, band, one thing. So, this was pretty, and I definitely need to take the digital media course so that we can get our communications going from school committee. Colleagues, any questions or comments? I suspect some folks have some things to ask or say. Liz.
Sure. This is actually just a pretty simple question, but in the ninth grade and soon-to-be 10th grade interdisciplinary programs, how many students do you typically have in the ninth grade program and expect in the 10th grade program?
Liz, pull your microphone a little closer. Could you just ask the last question again?
Yeah, just wondering how many students you have in the ninth grade interdisciplinary program and expect in the 10th.
Currently, we have three sections of students in the ninth grade program. It's a, basically, we have every seat filled that we could provide. In its first year, last year, we ran two sections. It was a successful year despite it being in a hybrid model and all of that. The teachers had put in tremendous amount of work to bring it to life, even in that split model. And I think we can see from the growing interest heading into year two, that students really responded to it, and pass it on to younger siblings or other friends, and word of mouth certainly continues to help. So, I expect we will have another three sections of the ninth grade next year. Little early to say for the interest coming into 10th grade, but I would imagine we'll be looking at two sections to start, maybe up to three.
Can I ask a, I don't know how many kids are in a section.
Follow-up, reply, anything. Sorry.
Thank you for pushing me past my, my high school head. Because of the limitations in a science classroom, for health and safety reasons, we have 24 students in a section. So, times two, we've got the 48, times three, 72, if my math is correct on the spot. So, that's how many we're, we have for this year.
Thanks for being here. Thanks for the presentation. It looks like a really fun program of studies. I wanted to, first of all, you know, say that this multidisciplinary effort is really consistent with the portrait of a graduate that we've kind of been working on, system-wide, to encourage kids to have the skills they're going to need to have for sort of, you know, where we are today and, and in the future. So, it's really exciting to see So it's really exciting to see the progression from the Greater Boston Project to the ninth grade and now to the 10th grade. I have a question that's sort of related to what Liz was asking, but I'm wondering, sort of, if you can talk about what kind of classes are we drawing to the interdisciplinary programs? Are we appealing to all the different kinds of kids in the high school, hopefully, into those classes?
When we put together the ninth grade interdisciplinary program, we spent a lot of time reflecting on what we had in place. You talked about the Greater Boston Project, which was kind of the initial root of the tree that's now grown into quite a fruitful one for our interdisciplinary courses. That is a senior year experience, and it is primarily geared towards students who tend to be comfortably performing in a high school setting. Great experience for them. I wouldn't want to take anything away. And we want to make sure that all students are able to engage in this kind of learning and mindset. And so we thought, starting at the ninth grade, was another really important step for us and even a symbolic step, to be able to provide that opportunity to be growing it from both ends. And we wanted to be really thoughtful about how we were labeling the courses. The teachers spent a lot of time even looking at unleveled courses. There are some challenges of that from the college end, and while philosophically, it made a lot of sense to look into that, in the end, we decided not to unlevel the courses just because of some of the challenges for how colleges view student performance. These are honors level courses. We have students who, if they were not in the 9IP program, may be in our college prep level course and are kind of stretching up. We have students who may otherwise be in our accelerated level courses, who really want the opportunity to have that connected learning and the richer experience from a social-emotional standpoint. So it really is able to benefit a wide range of students, and I think our teachers would attest to that. And having the special education teacher tied to it directly also ensures that anybody who, any of our students who are receiving special education services are receiving them from somebody who is intricately connected to the program and is able to extend that learning even more fully. And as that teacher is providing the support in a skill setting, all of the students are experiencing the same thing. They all have the quiz on Thursday. They all have that assignment that they're working on. So, it's another kind of depth of support that we're able to provide that in a more traditional skill setting where kids may have three or four or five different English teachers in that same classroom. This teacher is able to really enhance the learning in that separate space. So, again, we have students of all range and abilities who are really finding success and a lot of enjoyment in the class.
That's really encouraging to hear, and thanks for all the information.
I'm just going to call on Matt, who has a question. He's not sure it's going to work. If he can't ask it, I will ask it for him. Probably not as well, but I'll do my best. Matt?
Connie, am I?
So we can hear you a little in and out.
Well, if this doesn't work, Connie, you can take over. I just wanted to thank the folks for being stewards of this document. I think it's an important and powerful one. I know I and other parents and students have used it to understand learning pathways and offerings, what these courses are. I'd like to advocate for a course that, or a course that's not in there, which is called Directed Study. For folks who don't know what Directed Study is, about, what, I think about 300 or 400 students have it on their transcript, and it's currently part of their high school experience. And essentially, it's what I used to know as Study Block, Free Block. It's an open block or period of time on their schedule. And I think in terms of helping parents and students understand what that is, I would advocate to include it in the course of study because it shows up on so many transcripts and pathways. And I would advocate for changing the name. I think it could be misleading to some parents or confusing, only because the new Pollard, as we saw in the Pollard Course of Studies, they have a structured learning support class, which is having an adult work with students on their studies and their work. And so I'll leave it at that, but I would advocate and really, I think it would be great for families and students to have that as part of the understanding, as part of this document, since, again, it is such a, it's a part of so many students' experience at Needham High School.
Thank you, Matt. I appreciate that. I do want to clarify one thing. It's not on a student's transcript. It would appear on their schedule, but the course does not end up, because it doesn't bear any credits, it doesn't end up in the transcript. So, not anything that gets communicated to colleges. It's just for understanding of how students are using their time. But I certainly appreciate the feedback on both the title and the inclusion in the Program of Studies. Based on earlier conversation, I did reach out to area principals. There are about 30, 35 of us who are connected, spread around a lot of our comparison schools. And those that do offer any sort of study experience, none of them do currently have it in their Program of Studies. So I did want to just do that, check in with others. It is certainly something that we can continue to explore, and I'm very open to the ongoing feedback, and we'll continue to work with Dr. Gudicantson whether it makes sense to include it ultimately. But I certainly appreciate that.
Andrea.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you both for being here and for putting this together. I had two questions, not really related to the Program of Studies so much, although the first one probably is. I'm wondering if you could just describe the process by which you sort of develop these new courses and where sort of the ideas come from, because I feel like in particular, they're always, I think, responsive to student needs and kind of what's happening in the world more generally, but this year seemed particularly, there are, you know, Liz and I were talking earlier, there are classes that we would love to take, and they seem very geared toward current events and student interest. And I'm just curious how you're able to turn those around so quickly to create these new classes? And then the other question I had, and it may be way too early to tell, but the grade 10 teachers this year, I'm wondering if they're sensing any different characteristics or abilities or skills that the students who went through the 9IP program have and how that might be, you know, are they really good with, you know, project planning or something? Do they have skills that maybe kids who didn't go through that program have, or is there anything that they've observed about that particular group of students?
Do you want to take the first part?
Sure. So, the ideas definitely come from our staff, our teachers mainly, but also our department chairs and directors are working closely with our teachers who have ideas and want to help to bring those to the table to be discussed. And then we have a process with our high school leadership team that starts in the early fall, where chairs and directors are working with their departments to basically develop course proposals that they bring to HSLT, and we have discussions about the courses, how, you know, who they may benefit, what types of students, who's going to have access to these, what gaps are they filling within our current program, where do they overlap? We then take those discussions and the questions that we have, and sometimes we have additional meetings to make sure that we're not offering two courses that are very similar or where there's going to be some type of, you know, competition among departments or something like that. So, we have a lot of ongoing discussions throughout the fall. Chairs and directors are instrumental in it, but really, I think the ideas typically come mainly from teachers and from conversations and experiences that they have with their students. Gaps are just areas that they see that we're not currently serving, and then just looking at society as it evolves and trying to meet the needs of our students and set them up successfully to move forward. I'll let you talk to the 9IP process.
I don't have a set of firm feedback that I can easily provide at this moment. I will say, as we're gathering the feedback for how the students are kind of responding in the year after, it's really hard to decipher what the influence of the 9IP program was from their having their first year of high school in the middle of a pandemic and a hybrid model. So, I look forward to that question a year from now, when we've had a pretty steady and rich experience, and may, some of those students may be sitting in a 10IP course, and some may choose not to follow the 10IP program. And so we have, as we have the opportunity to see year to year and the various pathways, I think we have a chance to get even more information. Even the 10IP program next year, we'll have quite a few students who are leaving 9IP to go into 10IP, and we'll have a lot of students who are coming out of other class offerings to go into the 10IP program. And so, sitting right in front of a group of teachers, we're going to have this opportunity to have kind of the experiment of, what are they walking in with a set of skills and where do they need to be nurtured a little bit further if they haven't had those kinds of experiences? So, we're very interested in the answers to those questions. I don't think now is the best time to be able to even dig too deeply because there are too many variables at play at the moment.
Michael.
Thank you, Helen and Aaron. I got a thank you, one or two questions, and then some comments on the courses. The thank you is to both of you for the team work on improving this document, because, I mean, I know it's kind of a thankless job in a lot of ways, and we pushed for some things. I think it's all, visually, it's a lot better, I think it's a lot more useful, and I'm only, you know, frustrated that it's probably very hard to be able to get any feedback that indicates that, you know, it's successful. But I think, you know, looking at it and hearing it, it feels to me like it's just a much more useful document. So thank you for doing the work on that. The question I had was on the, when we're going back to the interdisciplinary 9 and 10, when you introduced it last year at 9, you talked a little about that, you know, bringing a little bit of the middle school model, doing some of that, so that the core interdisciplinary stuff is fantastic. Do you think, when you're looking at 10th grade students, are they going to be, are a lot of ninth grade students, you think, just want to do this because they really liked it so much? Do you think there'll be some students who will say, I'd like to try this in 10th grade for a reason? I mean, do you have any sense for how people might look at that?
I think we're going to have students really excited to continue the experience from 9th into 10th, and I think we'll have students who are really excited to join the experience, who maybe missed it or didn't really stop and think about it as an option and have heard a little bit more about it. So I do think it'll be a real intriguing opportunity for a lot of different students. And I get back to Andrea's question, I think it'll be interesting to see kind of how those groups come together and where the mix is. So, I guess I'll stop there.
Okay. Even, just looking at these courses, I just, I love to talk about all of them, but a couple or several I wanted to just make some observations on. I think the biotech promoter one is fabulous, and it's not just fabulous because it's about biotech, which is a huge industry here, but because of the way, I think, it allows students to think differently about science. For too many years, for too long, science is like, okay, I do biology this because I'm going to go become a scientist or I'm going to go to medical school. And this notion that you're allowing a biology student to take the next step and might do something very different, you know, might go into biotech business, might go into all sorts of areas. I think that is absolutely fabulous and a terrific message. The combating digital misinformation, you've heard me say this before, but frankly, I think every student ought to take statistics, and I think every student ought to have to take this course if we can find a way to do it. I just, it is so important that we do, that we do a lot more of that. Data sciences, can't say enough. Unfortunately, they invited us to go sit in on a data science talk by somebody who did that work for a hedge fund at eighth grade, but then that was the snow day, so I'm hoping it's rescheduled, because clearly, you know, I think there's a, again, that's a very power, people think of it as a very geeky thing, but it's very powerfully interdisciplinary. So I'm thrilled about that. And then the last one, I want to comment, I want to ask you about this. The digital media and reporting on two levels. I've been doing some work in kind of multiple capacities, including the work at the Needham Channel, thinking about how we can, what we can do to help reinvent local media. We have a real problem in this country. We just, there's no local news anymore. You can't get information out. And just thinking a little bit about that, so, and the kids who come out of these courses, I think, are absolutely fabulous and can think in that direction. So I like the idea of the reporting, but I notice, and I don't think this was true before, that they can get the FPA credit for this. And I don't know if that's new or recent, but to me, that's phenomenally important because the challenge of all these wonderful courses is, by the time students get through all things they have to take, there's never enough time to do these. So the extent to which we can, as part of being interdisciplinary, you know, cross-credit so that students have more flexibility to take some of these courses is powerful. I'd love to have a, talk a little bit about that. I know, you know, there's some state requirements, but anything we can do to work through and around that so that students can take courses that aren't the same, you know, aren't the three basic ones, right? And they can get credit for doing something that crosses these disciplines. That, to me, is another important interdisciplinary thing. You know, it's not the course specifically, but you're getting credit for something that it fits into. I'd love your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I'll just say that the, I think we're on the cusp of having a rich conversation about our graduation requirements. I think there's an opportunity to step back in the not-too-distant future and really reflect on, are the requirements that were established probably long before most of us were in the positions we're currently in, are they still reflective of what we want from a Needham High School experience and ultimately a graduation from Needham High School? I think that's a lengthier conversation. I think it's a deep conversation, but I think it's also one that does lead to or incorporate some of the questions that you're asking now. Even on a kind of side note, we didn't mention, but we, in previous iterations of the Program of Studies, we had a whole section dedicated to interdisciplinary learning. We wanted to highlight, we wanted to promote, we wanted to draw attention to. We dropped that because it's now kind of embedded all the way through the program, but it's not embedded in what we expect a student's experience to be. So if they choose not to have an interdisciplinary experience in their four years, then that's perfectly fine, and they can still get their diploma. So again, I don't know that I have an opinion sitting here right now in this moment, but I think those kinds of conversations are ones that we really ought to be having as a community. What is the kind of experience that we want to have for students? And what do we want to require? And what do we want to offer? And those are two real big differences. And I think the list of what we may want to require is far longer than we actually could while giving meaningful experiences to students and some choice to the students. So, you know, you mentioned two or three courses that you would love to see everyone required. At some point, we need to step back and say, okay, as good as they are, I was an English teacher, I taught a lot of public speaking, I would love every student to take public speaking. At some point, I need to say, that may not be the experience they have in isolation, and maybe some of those skills can be embedded into the experience. But again, those all ought to be just thoughtful conversations for us to have. So, I appreciate a number, not only yours, but a number of earlier comments, and I do think that'll be something that we come back to as a group in the not-too-distant future.
I'll look forward to that.
Mike.
Thank you so much for your presentation. And to go along with my colleagues, the breadth of course offerings is just phenomenal. While it's mentioned in the information here, if you could speak a little bit more of sort of the advising or guidance process for students in terms of how they navigate so many great course offerings, going through some of the electives and how they sort of come through, and especially as it aligns, again, with the portrait of a Needham graduate, what is sort of the advising process like for a student coming through freshman through senior year?
Speak a little bit, starting with the incoming ninth grade students. Next week on Wednesday night, I believe, we have a parent and family night for incoming ninth grade students and parents to introduce the Program of Studies, the course selection process, and what a typical ninth grade year looks like at Needham High School. So, that's where we start. The current eighth grade teachers and current eighth grade counselors are integral in their process for the transition up to high school, but our school counselors are also involved in that and go down to Pollard. We're also in communication with some of the private schools, local private schools in the area, to make sure that they have the information that we need and they're getting everything that our Pollard students are getting as well, in terms of the documents and materials. We also have, you know, for our current ninth through 11th grade students, our school counselors are working closely with them. We're just about to kick off the course selection process now, which starts with our current teachers having conversations with their students about the levels that they'll be taking next year and the courses that they'll be taking next year. And for the most part, every department also has some type of either presentation or conversations with their classes about the elective offerings and opportunities within their departments and are focusing on individual conversations with students about where they want to be next year, what other courses they're interested in taking, what things they have going on outside of school and academics in terms of balancing that. And in anything that we put out there, we're always trying to give that message, too, that students and families know what's on our students' plates the best, and they should be the most important part of that process. So, we're working closely as school, high school leadership team with our school counselors and our guidance staff to improve that process, to improve the communication around it and to provide support. And along with everything, we want to make sure that our students, from all backgrounds, are feeling supported in this process and feeling that they could be, you know, take the courses that they want to take and feel like they're going to be most challenged in and be supported by our whole staff in that process.
Thank you.
I think Matt had a question. He said it was good timing, so it must relate to some.
Yeah, very, very good, very good timing. Mike, thanks for that question. Mine is connected to that. I want to, you know, as our ninth, 10th, and 11th graders are going through the course selection process, from my own experience, I can tell it's a very powerful one, one that's super student-centered. that's super student-centered, conversational, and I personally have appreciated the time the counselors have spent trying to think through what's the appropriate elective, what's the right level of course at this point in time in my own children's progression. And I'm glad that it's going to be kicked off again and continuing in the same way. I think, as I was reading through the course of studies, though, when I'm looking at some of the math courses, especially the upper-level math courses, there are a couple of taglines that say, "Student must get an A in the course before," or a B plus or an A, or something like that. And it struck me as being a little bit out of step with my own personal experience and this process, where students who might get the B plus or kind of really catch on with a passion in math, I think if you read the course of studies, might feel, "Oh, I got a B, I can't take this class." I understand that we want to put folks in the right place and that there, especially in math, you know, there are some poor understandings. But it felt out of step a little bit personally with the Portrait of the Needham Graduate, having students take charge of their own learning. And I could see how maybe families and students who weren't as familiar with the system might automatically think that they couldn't take the course, simply because they didn't get an A in the course before. And so, I'd just love to hear, just out of curiosity, what, are there appeal processes? Is it as rigid as it looks? And it seemed, knowing grades are kind of subjective and vary from teacher to teacher, I'm just also wondering why this might be the only thing we look at to determine whether a student would be fit and ready to succeed in the next year upper-level course.
Great questions, Matt. And really, it's less about trying to be restrictive and more about trying to communicate the likeliest pathway to being successful in a class. So, what we don't want is for somebody to see a prerequisite like that as a firm brick wall that cannot be gone through or over. But we do want to make sure that we're communicating as clearly as possible based on the past experiences that we've had with students, what scenarios are most likely to lead to success, and what more than often, more often than not, are going to lead to some real challenges in a particular class. So, we do have opportunities, and we certainly have had students who have not met that prerequisite explicitly, to have conversations with the department chair. And there are opportunities for them to be able to demonstrate their proficiency in that particular subject, to be able to take the course. So, again, we've got, really, and all the way through this process, a lot of flexibility. We do set, you know, expectations, and teachers make recommendations, and the student voice and the parent influence is essential in that. So, we do have opportunities for overrides of recommendations at a couple of different stages. What I do want to go back to is one of Allison's, I think, really important points. I think too often, and I've got three teenagers, so I'll speak as a parent myself, too, never mind as a principal, we think about that particular isolated experience, and how could that child perform in that particular class? So, could they perform well in accelerated chemistry? Absolutely. Can they do that and take three other accelerated courses and be on a varsity soccer team and work 20 hours a week and spend time at church? Maybe all that can't happen. And that's where that broader conversation about what a student is looking to take on is essential. And I really continue to encourage parents to be thinking about that whole range of experience that a student is going to have. We want them healthy, first and foremost. We want them happy, and we want them challenged. And I would say, in that order. So, if we're leading with, how do we make it as challenging as possible, then it does become problematic more often than not. So, again, that to your question, I'll bring it back. What I don't want is people to feel like the door is firmly closed. We do want to make sure that people understand the kind of experience that the student would be heading into, so that that can be part of the broad thinking as they're looking at the whole experience we're going to create for them in that given year.
I appreciate that, Darren. I think, you know, it's not a part of any other department description. You don't have to get an A in 10th grade English to take AP, you know? So, I think it would be, I appreciate maybe going, but even if it was something like, you know, successful students typically get an A in the course prior. Something like that, that might soften and communicate, since this is such an important communication document, to parents and students that, here's what we believe has traditionally has been a successful, you know, kind of prerequisite, but certainly wouldn't, is not a hard and fast requirement. If it is, if it is a hard and fast requirement, then I do believe that the wording might, everyone might benefit from some change wording. Thanks.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I do, if I may, I'm sure, just add to that, that I think that this last conversation between Mr. Seacott and Mr. Pangler is important. In my experience, both as superintendent, principal, and parent, parents also, and students also, appreciate having some clarity about what's ahead of them. And one of the criticisms I recall as a high school principal is when families said, "I have no idea what I was getting into," or students, "And I got into it, and now my schedule's locked, and now I'm almost, now it's a mess." So, providing some upfront information where it's appropriate, and in language that's, you know, accessible, I think is important, because it does signal what may be expected. And there may be different ways to do that as we continue to have this document. You know, it's a, this has been a process with this document that has been influenced by these conversations at this table. So, I appreciate the school committee doing that, and also by the portrait, as Matt has pointed out, and the good work of the high school administration. So, every year, it just, it gets better, becomes more accessible, and provides rich opportunities for kids. And it's a communication document. This is what's ahead. This is what you can expect, and so you want to be thoughtful about that as you make decisions.
Other questions or comments here? Thank you. Thank you for all the work that went into this. I would encourage parents to glance through this. I also hope that parents, this is my bias, will allow their students to do most of the processing themselves, to decide what is going to be that program, along with the help of their teachers and guidance counselors. It's going to help them be healthy, healthy, happy, and challenged. I like that. Maybe that's my bias, because I don't remember being very involved with my kids when they made these decisions, maybe. I should have been more so. But it's a document which just shows the rich offerings at the high school and the many different paths our students can take to the subjects with both are necessary for success and also interest them. To be able to do something that interests you is really, that sometimes doesn't start until college. So, this is a way of starting it at a much earlier level, as early as interdisciplinary in 9th grade. So, I think that's just outstanding. Also, would like to acknowledge the work in changing anything, making a change. Also, would like to acknowledge the work of the planning process. If an idea comes forward, and then you start planning in the fall, thinking it through, talking it through is much appreciated. So, I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're doing this work. We're lucky to have you. And also, yes, I do know that Ally is, Allison's really the one that does all the scheduling, which is, you should probably teach a course, maybe to other schools in the area, I don't know. So, and then to have the environment where coaches, like Mr. O., and students, like Dylan's team, can excel in both athletic and sportsmanlike ways. So, that's the environment that you've created, and that's much appreciated. Thank you for your time and all the hard work. If there's nothing else, we'll let you go home at long last. Allison, yeah.
Just want to recognize both Kitty Maffey and Jen Regret again, who did 99% of this formatting and design work, and the scheduling process, which is starting next week, basically, with our course selection process. We have a team that I keep recruiting for every year, but we've had a team of five people in place for the last five, six years that does all the work. And that's Will Granin and Mary Jane Walker, and Mary Kay Alessi. Other assistant principals have joined over time, James Ash. And we're really all doing that work equally. So, I just want to recognize them. It's a ton of work. It's not in anyone's job description. And every year, there's a new program and a new element to the scheduling process that is pretty intense. So, it's a lot of problem solving, but they're amazing.
Must be a lot of problem solving. I was glad to see that block with all of the counselors and various types of counselors available. So, any last words, Mr. Seacott or Dr. Goodkamp?
Forever thanks to Allison.
Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Gosh, I really would like to take a few of those courses. And now we'll move into another, this isn't exactly all high school all the time, but it's pretty exciting to have a lot of concentration on things going on there into athletic program update. Dr. Goodkamp?
Thank you, Men of Chair. Well, I'd like to welcome Mr. Dan Lee and Mr. Ricardo Riqui Andrade, our new Assistant Athletic Director. This evening, it's actually a good evening for them to come. They're working this evening at some games and events, so I hope someone's, you left somebody in charge. And earlier, we were able to honor the boys' soccer team, as you know, and excited to do that. This is Ricky's first year joining us, and we're excited to have him. This is really an opportunity to highlight a really rich athletic program that is inclusive, high-performing, and I would argue, probably the best in the state, providing opportunities for all of our students in different ways, highlighting traditional and non-traditional opportunities for students to grow, play, and achieve. I think, should we start out with the video? What do you think, Mr. Lee?
Yeah, sure. So, thank you-
You explain, and I'll get it ready.
Get it queued up.
Okay.
So, thank you for having us. It's been two years since we were here, and obviously, a lot has happened since then, and sports are a microcosm of everything that's been going on in the district and the challenges that we faced over the past two years. So, with this video, since we weren't here last year, what I wanted to do was sort of tell the story dating back to the last time we were here in early 2020, to where we are now, and the sort of the challenges that we faced, and how all of our athletes and coaches and families and teachers and coaches and administration, everyone really pulled together to make our program successful. So, sorry. You got the volume up, Dan?
The red carpet is just declared that this is the payday. The red carpet is just declared that this is the payday. We can do it higher. I can't hear the thunder, don't worry about my numbers. Look at me, so see the thunder, let it go on, I'm fighting on. I can't see the light, I'm coming from your tears, you see I'm frightened. I can't see the lion sleeps tonight, and my tears you're crying. You can't love me unless you love you too. Treat yourself like nothing but a fool. Can't love me unless you love you too. Love you too. Come now, set the past on fire. Stand up, put your face to the sky higher. Together, we can take it higher. We can do it higher. Come now, set the past on fire. Stand up, put your face to the sky higher. Together, we can take it higher. We can do it higher. I can't see the rainbow, coming from my heart, it's all a pain. Come now, see I'm my angel, survive to the past, we're all in the mud. You can't love me unless you love you too. Treat yourself like nothing but a fool. Can't love me unless you love you too. Love you too. Come now, set the past on fire. Stand up, put your face to the sky higher. Together, we can take it higher. We can do it higher. Come now, set the past on fire. Stand up, put your face to the sky higher. Together, we can take it higher. We can do it higher. I want love, I want to give it, I want love, please deliver it. I want love, I want to give it, I want love, please deliver it. I want love, I want to give it, I want love, please deliver it. I want love, I want to give it, I want love, please deliver it. Come now, set the past on fire. Stand up, put your face to the sky higher. Together, we can take it higher. We can do it higher. Come now, set the past on fire. Stand up, put your face to the sky higher. Together, we can take it higher. We can do 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 it higher. Once upon a young year, when all our shadows disappeared, the animals inside came out to play. We fixed the fate of life's, learned our lessons through the tears, made every reason new and old fade. One day my father, he told his son, don't let it slip away. He said, "We are the stars, we're the stars." I'm living in my heart, I'm loving you. I'm a king, I'm a queen, I'm a queen. He said, "One day, you'll leave this world behind, so live a life you will remember." My father told me, now it's just a child. These are the nights that never die. My father told me-
The whole idea of accomplishing that many sports, that many meets, that many practices, that many successful, and successes in multiple ways, not just winning games, is amazing.
Thank you, Connie.
Thank you for all you've done. And you may want to make some comments now. Dr. Goodkamp, some I want to make some comments.
No, just with appreciation for, you know, the leadership to pull together. It's certainly been complicated the last couple of years. And I think the enthusiasm of our athletes, the support of our families, and, you know, of course, our coaches, who, many of whom are our staff members, our Needham Public Schools family, are just really pretty awesome. And they are our teachers on the field, our-
a lot of our coaches are also teachers in the district. And when we hire coaches, it's one of the things that we talk about is that we don't just want the students to perform on the field, but we want them to become better people and creating that culture of a positive program. And I think that with girls volleyball and boys soccer, in particular, two of our most successful programs, not just this fall, but traditionally, for them to do things the right way, to win a girls volleyball, to be presented with the sportsmanship award at the state championship that they end up winning is unbelievable. And Dylan and the boys soccer team with Coach O, same thing. They were one of the top teams in the state, but they do it the right way. So that's something that we talk about with our coaches on a yearly basis about making better people. Better people make better teammates, and better teammates make great teams.
I see Dylan nodding his head. Yes.
I agree.
What did they do, school? Is that what it is? Andrea.
Thank you both. I will say your video is probably one of the highlights of the school committee year for me. Like, it's just, it's such, it's such a wonderful feeling. Like, you come away, your eyes tear up at different parts. It's just, it's very joyous. So thank you for putting it together. I'm sure it's a lot of work to do it. So I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd like to just pick up on Mike's question. I think, you know, the nature of competitive high school athletics, it's pretty intense. And we've been very fortunate that, you know, our teams have been successful in many, many ways. But I'm curious how you address, you know, depending on the makeup of the kids or what happens on the field. Sometimes things don't go well, and it can be challenging. And I'm just wondering if you could maybe speak how you address, you know, when it doesn't go as swimmingly as it tends to in Needham.
Right. That's a great question. And a lot of it in terms of our job is to coach the coaches. And we were both former coaches prior. And winning is easy. And not winning the games, but everything that goes along with it is easy, and the real challenges are when you're having difficult seasons. And we have those frequently across different sports. So it's something that we have regular check-ins with coaches throughout the year in terms of how things are going. We're at a lot of the events to see how it is and looking at sort of different goals that they set throughout the year. So even if teams don't start off all that well, sort of hitting a reset button and looking at process goals that they can always take positives away from the end of the season regardless of their record.
Other questions or comments? Michael.
Thank you, Connie. The video, fabulous. I love it. I wanted to maybe talk about a couple of challenges. I think, well, first, just this idea of the, you know, for years now, we're in the Positive Coaching Alliance. You move forward. It feels to me like we've really institutionalized a lot of this stuff. Do you feel like it's easier to bring people in now? Because it just seems everywhere, and not just winning these awards. But it seems like maybe you don't have to do as much, shall we say, redirecting of people who think they're coming, you know, being a coach is about winning the games. That's all it's about.
Right. And I think sort of our reputation over this past five to 10 years, people see it, and we are one of the higher profile athletic programs in the state, and coaches know what they're getting into when they're coming into a Needham athletic program. And our work with the Positive Coaching Alliance and Courtney Schalliffe, it was prior just to when we came last time, won a Positive Coaching Alliance Award. And some of the volleyball players have won awards. We've established ourselves with these partnerships with groups like the PCA and with Special Olympics for Unified Sports, where we were, you said we were one of four schools to launch Unified Basketball at the middle school level. We were approached by Special Olympics this year to be part of a pilot study from UMass Boston looking at Unified Sports, and they chose us to study how we did things. So I think we've established ourselves in ways, not just winning games or winning championships, but also along the lines of PCA and Special Olympics that we're a lot more than just winning, but we're a more, as Dan said, inclusive program.
Well, we're all very proud of that. I mean, you're not always, you can't always be here, but whenever these awards come out, you can just hear how much, how proud we are of that, equally as proud as of any winning. I'm wondering, but over the last several years, there've been a lot of back and forths and changes in the teams that have been played, the MIA, which sometimes, to me quite frankly, feels like the tail wagging the dog. But I won't go into that anymore. But there's been some challenges, I think. For some, I don't know to the extent it affects us in, you know, a lot longer trips, which, you know, in a time of COVID, in a time of transportation, how has that affected us? Do you feel like we're competing against the right schools in the right places, some balance of competitiveness and not having to have kids go, you know, to kingdom come to play games?
Right. Right. And I think as, so for those of you who don't know, this year, the MIA switched to a statewide tournament format. So instead of having different sections, which we were always in the South, that now the top 32 teams in each division for each sport make the tournament. For us, this benefits Needham High School for a couple of reasons. One is that we can typically compete against most schools. But the majority of Division One schools, which we're in, for 90% of our sports are in Eastern Mass, and we're centrally located in Eastern Mass. So it wasn't, I mean, Dylan, you probably went down to Barnstable or New Bedford, and we had teams go up to Andover. So because we're centrally located in Eastern Mass, that was the norm for us to have to go a little distance, maybe an hour. But there'll be very rare circumstances where we'll have to go out to Western Mass, and we don't have to do the North Hampton to Martha's Vineyard that people like to bring up. So this format benefits us. I think we saw from a competitive standpoint this fall, our Bay State Conference, which is strong. We played Newton North in the state final in girls volleyball. They're right next door. Newton North and Brookline played in boys soccer, whereas traditionally, we would knock each other out in a section. And now it's a truer competition. And so it will benefit us in the long run.
Great, thanks.
Mike.
I have a question to sort of add in. Sort of with the timeline of the video, sort of showing the very, right before sort of the pandemic and sort of all the way through, have there been any sort of silver linings for the sports program in Needham that as with trainings or with practices or the way that you've had to approach, so having wrestling outside, for instance, or modifying sports seasons or moving sports seasons to a different season, that sort of have either stuck or perhaps maybe ways to continue to do things that maybe, at least in, you know, the COVID environment that we've been in, that there've been some glimmers of hope of, wow, this is something that we hadn't done before, thinking creatively, and now we might approach things, you know, continuing in a certain way?
Yeah. So to start, I wouldn't want to do it all over again. But I think live streaming is one thing. And that last winter, when we didn't have any spectators in any of the indoor sports, that's something that with the help of the boosters, they got us iPads to livestream basketball and hockey and swim and gymnastics. And that's something that even now, we have limited spectators. We've sort of brought back. And I think it's something that people like. I think family members who don't live close by gives them an opportunity to watch their grandkids or nephews or nieces. And so I think that's one silver lining that came out of it. And also, I think coaches adapted and players adapted in terms of how they train, in terms of film sessions. If they're looking at a scouting report for an upcoming game, they can all do it from their comfort of their home over Zoom now as opposed to having to meet in a classroom to go over it. So from the technology standpoint, I think that's sort of what came out of it that we could continue forward with.
Thank you.
I see Mr. Andrade nodding his head. We wondered if, I wonder whether there's anything you'd like to say working with Dan? And you're, I think, your first year here?
Yeah.
Yes. We're glad you're here.
Thank you. Yeah, Dan's been a great kind of mentor for me this first year. I think he does it the right way. And, you know, talking earlier about the coaches and about the sportsmanship awards, I think, like adding to that, like other teams and other coaches and players, they see, they're like kind of seeing that model set. And that also helps the culture be what it is. And that doesn't happen without his leadership and kind of setting that example right from the start of the school year and right from the start of every season. So.
Well, welcome. And I can do.
Ricky's been in the district for four years too as a special ed TA and unified sports coach and soccer coach as well. So.
Great.
He had worked with us, and he had gotten his masters at Northeastern and interned with Mike and I as part of his program. So it's been a little bit of an easier transition.
He knew what he was getting into.
He did. He did. And every day, I ask him if he regrets it.
And I say no.
Okay. I wasn't going to ask you in public. But could you explain the Unified Program for those in our listening audience who, at least by this, are small, but hopefully will be watching on tape, and it'll be in the minutes? What is the Unified Program?
Sure. So the Unified Program is something we started, I think, three years ago. And it's a model that is run with Special Olympics in the MIA that pairs students with and without intellectual disabilities competing on the same team. And so the difference between Special Olympics and Unified Sports is that Special Olympics has all athletes with special needs competing together, whereas this, it sort of blends it together. And so for Unified Track and Field, it doesn't matter who's running. If you both run 100-meter dash in 11 seconds, you're competing against each other. In basketball, we have athletes and we have partners. And you have athletes and partners on the court at the same time. And it's something that, as I said, we've become one of the go-to schools in terms of the Special Olympics will come to us to model for other schools looking to do it in terms of how we've done things. And we launched the middle school program, which I think they played their first game the last day of school in 2020, because we had a discussion of whether we were going to go ahead with it. We played a game against Walpole, I think on March 13, 2020.
It was the last event, I think.
The last event, last athletic event before things shut down. And so that's something too that we wanted to bring to the middle school. So kids didn't have to wait to get to the high school because it's an amazing program. And Ricky's worked closely with that, with both those teams as well. And it's easily one of the best programs we have in Needham. And I think anyone that comes out and watches a meet or a basketball game, you know, would agree with you. And so that's something that we have now for Unified Basketball. We have, we sort of do a selection process for the partners to make sure we're finding the right kids because there are so many people that want to participate in it. So it's a great program. It's something we're really proud of.
So we'll see stories every now and then on Channel 5 or whatever about a particular individual with different abilities who sinks a basket or is allowed to go to a match of some kind. This is a lot of kids that are participating. And that is outstanding. And it just reminds me, again, through the lens of equity and inclusion, that in a number of ways, our athletic program supports those goals as well. We always like to acknowledge that it's not just athletics, that fine and performing arts are important as well. Other aspects of the high school program are important, but athletics is important to a lot of students, and a lot of students can participate. I mean, it's thousands of slots in the Needham program, I think.
Yeah. Right. I mean, we fill close to 2,300 spots on average a year.
Wow. It's offering so much to so many. And then the other way we see that is in making sure that lots of different folks are included, including adding girl, I think, girls rugby last year, maybe? Is that right?
Girls rugby, we've had as a club program for a few years. And we're transitioning them to varsity. And girls golf would have been launched in spring of 2020, but we started that up last year, and we had great numbers.
Love to see this continue for all to participate. Dylan's nodding his head again. It's always a good sign. Any other comments? I just wanted to ask one. Oh, I wanted to comment on the word persevered. It was in your video.
Yeah.
In spite of it looking like these matches couldn't be played, these practices couldn't happen, these sports couldn't continue, you persevered and made it work. And it shows, and that's great. Did you have any trouble getting staff, like refs and bus drivers and things like that?
Yeah. So I think that's a challenge, not just locally, but statewide. And where the fall is, and knows that it was a challenge for transportation in terms of drivers. And so, yeah, there were some games, not just for us, but for some of our opponents, where buses that were supposed to be at school for 2:45 departure couldn't get there until 4 o'clock. And there's a lot of scrambling that needs to be done. We have games that need to be moved due to lack of officials. So it's all one big puzzle that we work on daily. We're on the transportation end. We're very lucky to have two Needham buses with Ted and Jerry that drive that we know we can count on them. And so they don't necessarily get there as early as Connolly could. But we, I mean, we've done it this week where we're shifting things around. So, yeah, it's been challenging. Those are sort of the unforeseen things that we've faced over the past year or so that we just get creative and, you know, remember it's for the kids and do whatever we can to make the experience the best as possible for them.
That's outstanding. Other questions or comments? I kind of took the last few minutes here. Matt, I didn't ask you for sure. Nope, shaking his head. He heard it all. So it reminds me a little bit of the scheduling that Allison does, the tremendous, the puzzle pieces that you all have to put together to make this work, and you do for students. And I neglected when I mentioned equity and inclusion to get down to the middle school and start asking, having those students participate as well. Dr. Goodkamp?
No, I just appreciate them being here. We have a program that is competitive. It is wide-ranging and allows, with the school committee's support, by the way, it was the school committee who supported a wide variety of programs. You know, a couple of them haven't run this year, fencing, for example, but bowling, but there have been so many programs to get so many different kinds of students involved that complement the other co-curricular programs. It's amazing. And finally, as Dan pointed out, it's an inclusive program. It hits all the marks of what this community has supported, you've supported, and we should be proud of. So thank you.
Those sportsmanship awards come from somewhere, and they come from your work. I meant to say that to Mr. O and to his co-coach, that appreciate all of that work. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Best movie we've seen in a while. Lost My Place, whoa, exciting, different kind of competition. Talking about the annual town meeting warrant article requests. We have to be on our best game for those, ladies and gentlemen. Dr. Goodkamp?
So, Madam Chair, members of the school committee.
Did you have any trouble getting staff like refs and bus drivers and things like that?
Yeah, so I think that's a challenge, not just locally, but statewide. And where the fall is, and knows that it was a challenge for transportation in terms of drivers. And so, yeah, there were some games, not just for us, but for some of our opponents where buses that were supposed to be at school for 2:45 departure couldn't get there until 4 o'clock. And there's a lot of scrambling that needs to be done. We have games that need to be moved due to lack of officials. So it's all one big puzzle that we work on daily. We're on the transportation end. We're very lucky to have two Needham buses with Ted and Jerry that drive that we know we can count on them. And so they don't necessarily get there as early as Connolly could, but we, I mean, we've done it this week where we're shifting things around. So, yeah, it's been challenging. Those are sort of the unforeseen things that we've faced over the past year or so that we just get creative and, you know, remember it's for the kids and do whatever we can to make the experience the best as possible for them.
That's outstanding. Other questions or comments? I kind of took the last few minutes here. Matt, I didn't ask you for Sheriff. Nope, shaking his head. He heard it all. So it reminds me a little bit of the scheduling that Allison does, the puzzle pieces that you all have to put together to make this work and you do for students. And I neglected when I mentioned equity and inclusion to get down to the middle school and start asking, having those students participate as well.
Yeah.
Dr. Goodkans?
No, I just appreciate them being here. We have a program that is competitive. It is wide-ranging and allows, with the school committee's support, by the way, it was the school committee who supported a wide variety of programs. You know, a couple of them haven't run this year, fencing, for example, but bowling. But there have been so many programs to get so many different kinds of students involved that complement the other co-curricular programs. It's amazing. And finally, as Dan pointed out, it's an inclusive program. It hits all the marks of what this community has supported, you have supported, and we should be proud of. So thank you.
Those sportsmanship awards come from somewhere and they come from your work. I meant to say that to Mr. Owen to his co-coach that appreciate all of that work. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Best movie we've seen in a while. Lost My Place? Whoa, exciting, different kind of competition, talking about the annual town meeting warrant article requests. We have to be on our best game for those, ladies and gentlemen.
So, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, how can I frame this? So it's early, but town meeting will be coming in May and the select board has opened the warrant. At this time, I am, Ann and I are requesting that the school committee, not tonight, but that you consider endorsing and supporting these warrant articles as they are preliminarily drafted. For the select board ultimately would be the ones to insert them and vote to include them in the warrant. However, the reality is the select board will lean on, particularly for the Emory Grover Project, will lean on the school committee to be a vocal proponent at town meeting and partner with you in it if you endorse these two warrants and ultimately if the select board includes them. So there are two. One of the warrants, and again, you know, draft language here, is to see if the town meeting will vote to raise an appropriate sum for the renovation of the Emory Grover Building and associated grounds. And also include the temporary use of the Hillside School as a swing space. And then the second article, which is actually already in process in some ways through the design, I believe, from a previous work the town has been doing, to see if the town will appropriate $275,000 to repair and upgrade the heating system at Hillside for its longer term use beyond the use of EG. Not knowing exactly how we'll use it in the future, it is an important and wise investment. The building needs to be heated regardless of its use for the foreseeable future, particularly in the winter. The one thing I can say to you, stepping back on both plans, the Hillside School will have essentially only technical upgrades that we're proposing at this time. We're going to move in as is, the way the police have it set up right now, we're moving in and just occupying the spaces that they are currently occupying. There will be some upgrades regarding sprinklers, some electrical upgrades that are required. Essentially, that will be the work that is done at Hillside. Emory Grover, of course, the warrant article speaks to the entirety of the construction funds for both Emory Grover and anything at Hillside. So what you should know too, that the projects both move forward. There was even a meeting earlier today with the design review team from the town to review the Emory Grover plans. I look forward to, you know, in about a month or so, bringing forward to the school committee some more specific details and layout ideas for school administration operations. The PPBC continues to weigh in on and study options for Emory Grover. And so that's all moving forward. So these two articles, you would be voting at your next meeting, if you can, to endorse them and recommend the select board insert them. They in turn will be the ones who would vote to insert them on your behalf. Ann, clarify anything I just said.
So I think technically you would be voting to request the construction article, that the select board consider inserting in the warrant, that you're forwarding to the select board for their consideration, that article. The boiler work will be, is technically advanced by the Building Maintenance Department of DPW. So we might be asking you to endorse that one, but you are voting to request the other, if that makes sense.
And also, I think it's important, and I said the language is preliminary, you know, where some of the language, for example, in the Emory Grover talks about appropriate sum for the renovation of an addition to. Well, as you know, there will no longer be an addition to. There will be, you know, an elevator included and kind of a loading dock, not a loading dock, but a loading area that may protrude a bit if one would consider that an addition. But the plan is not for the much larger addition that we had discussed about, you know, earlier. So we'll continue to work on this language. But it is important to get this in in the next couple of weeks to, before the warrant closes.
Seems like it's important to have that word addition for, just so it's known that some little bit might be out in the back there.
Well, we'll clarify that to make sure.
Okay. All right. Questions or comments? Mike?
Thank you for sharing this. And as I'm sure it will probably come up and maybe it will be in a future version of these drafted warrant articles, for the one regarding the heating repairs and upgrades, are you able to speak a little bit more to the current state of the system that sort of warrants why it does need to be upgraded and at this time? Because I'm sure these will probably be questions that a town meeting member could potentially be asking.
Yeah, you know, go ahead.
We will definitely be providing an FAQ document for this, these articles at town meeting. The memo does try to address a little bit of why this is requested. The second paragraph of this, of the memo addresses why.
Okay. Right now, they're struggling to heat the building. So that's an ongoing challenge because the systems are, it's one of the reasons we left Hillside and opened Sanita. So the systems are struggling to keep up with the demand, even with the police station. So it is timely for the work.
I remember somebody commented saying leaving the Emory Grover to go to Hillside was going from sort of bad to worse in some ways. So we can't have the pipes rupturing, et cetera. Michael?
When it comes to the Hillside upgrades, they're, the building maintenance and building construction are looking, and I don't know, you know, if that's been decided yet, to try to put air source heat pumps in so that they don't put in a boiler that would be basically thrown out if the building is demolished in the future. Air source heat pumps could be moved to another building if that's possible. The sprinklers are unfortunate, quite frankly, but there's just no way around the various entities that are not wanting to extend the length of time that the building goes without that. So it is unfortunate, but for everything else, we really are, and Dan has been really firm on this, is just like trying to move in and use what the police have so we don't spend a lot of money on it. And I think that's, you know, it's an important thing to remind the community that we're doing our best to not put as many money, to limit what goes into Hillside that can't be used elsewhere or, you know, will not be used after we leave. And I think that is important. And I know that the designers are working very hard to pull together the estimates for the Emory Grover. There's just a lot of work to be done before, you know, before they can come up with a number. And then tomorrow evening, the superintendent and Ann, I think, and I will be attending the CPC meeting where we will present our request for CPC funding for their discussion and consideration.
I'll just call on Andrea in a second. Maybe we could send out the link to the CPC meeting if it's a Zoom meeting and we could, anyone who wants to attend from here could? Okay.
We will do that.
Thank you. Andrea?
Thank you. I support these articles overwhelmingly, and I wanted to maybe put in a request for us to endorse or whatever the right language is, the article related to the design funds for rooftop replacement of the boilers at Broadmano and Elliott as well, in the same way that we are endorsing the Hillside boiler replacement because that will be used for school purposes. My understanding is that the magnitude of these boiler replacement projects at both schools is quite sizable. So I would love to have us be seen as strong advocates of those projects, you know, from the get-go because we know that's a critical need in these two buildings.
I, Madam Chair, I think it's an excellent idea and clearly needed. It will be a multi-year and multimillion dollar project for both Broadmano and Elliott, and it's timely and it's needed. And so your support, I think, will, I'm sure the select board will appreciate that.
We move forward pretty amazing. Any other questions? Ann, any other comments or questions? So will, if you think of questions, share them with perhaps me and Dr. Goodkans and so we can be prepared to vote at our next meeting. Onto town meeting pretty soon. And our ever-present topic, update on health and safety. A little giggle from over left here, although I didn't look at the dashboard yet today, but the dashboard's a little less accurate in a way now because we don't see all the rapid tests. Okay, Dr. Goodkans?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Some additional new information we'd like to share with the community and with the school committee, and we will make sure that this slideshow gets out to the community. It will be posted on the website and I will email it because it's pertinent to our staff as well, email it to the staff tomorrow morning. So what has happened since we last met, there has been some movement. And I think I'll just really, I will read off some of this because I think it's all important. The recent announcement by the commissioner and the governor mean that testing programs in the Commonwealth will change and what are the implications to Needham? I think the first thing I want to mention is that what will not change will be our priority around health and safety, led by the folks around this table and also by our Joint Committee on Health and Safety, our school nurses, our principals, and really all of our staff. We begin and end with health and safety. Now, it is, it's true, and the commissioner shared this, the governor shared this, the data from the test and stay program in the state shows that close contacts in school that were identified by positive students are an unlikely source of the spread of COVID. In fact, 98.6% of the 508,000 tests taken were negative. That's true in Needham as well, very, very small number of students who are identified as being positive. Also recently, I had the opportunity to hear Dr. Shishaw from Brown talk about the need to do away with surveillance testing, believing that it was no longer appropriate, and to be thinking about using rapid antigen tests, which he felt were more appropriate for diagnostic purposes than PCR tests. And we think, and the state is now encouraging a shift in focus, to identify symptomatic students and staff rather than exerting a tremendous amount of effort and energy on in-school close contacts. So what is proposed is that the contact tracing in the existing test and stay program that we have will end as long as we do two things, at least two things. Provide at-home rapid tests for students and staff and begin a symptomatic testing program for those students experiencing symptoms or and/or do pool testing. We have opted out of pooled and surveillance testing and believe that continues to be the right thing not to do. Families and staff have to opt in to the symptomatic testing program in order to participate. Many have already opted in, over 70% of our parents, when they opted into the test and stay program. So they're pretty much set. Families and staff must opt in to receive at-home diagnostic tests. And for the purposes of illustration, these are the tests that we are talking about, the iHealth 15-minute rapid tests are the ones that we have and that we would be distributing. Families and staff can decide to do both of the programs, diagnostic and symptomatic, maybe just one of them or neither of them. That will be entirely up to the staff member and to families. And we will redeploy the resources the state has provided, our contractor, CIC, to assist in the management and the execution of symptomatic testing. So let's talk first about the diagnostic testing program or the at-home testing program. Why supply at-home tests? Well, we really believe there are at least four reasons. First, we want to provide these as a health resource that has become quite scarce for families and staff to get hold of. We want to strengthen our prevention efforts. We want to aid in the identification of positive cases and build confidence for families. We've all heard, of course, in the news that perhaps we're peaking or slowing down or things are, you know, we're over the most dangerous period. And yet, you know, we're not there yet. And of course, we have February vacation ahead of us and there still are some uncertain times. And so we do want to continue to make sure that folks feel confident about keeping our schools open for learning. How do we do this? Well, we're going to do it in two ways. Briefly stated, the state wants to provide one of these boxes that has two tests to every staff member and every student, one box every two weeks. We have decided to provide one box every week so that folks can test twice a week on Sunday and Wednesday. We're doing that because we're receiving tests from the state and because we're using federal American Recovery Plan Act funds, ARPA funds, that the town is supporting us with. And thanks to the select board for voting those funds. And we will be able to distribute more tests so that families and staff have more and additional resources. We're going to distribute these kits weekly and we're going to require that one test be taken on Sunday and one on Wednesday. Now, the Sunday requirement really is part of the DESI plan. DESI wants families to and staff to agree they'll take one on Sunday. And the one on Wednesday, we expect to have happen as well. We also know that it's possible on Tuesday morning, one may not be feeling well and may want to use that test. And we would encourage someone to use that test if they have no other resources. That means you take a pass on Wednesday. And we want to make sure that people are using the resources we can provide. And that's the most important thing, I think. Families will report only positive tests to school and staff will report positive tests to Human Resources. I mentioned that the state is only providing one test per week, and I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. They're providing one box, which has two tests every two weeks. You take one test a week. And Needham is providing the additional kit so that there'll be one kit going home a week for our students and for our staff so that you can test twice a week. These tests from the state are scheduled to arrive tomorrow by 7:00 PM. The tests that we ordered have already arrived and are secure at the high school. The important thing is that we want folks to test twice a week, once on Sunday to prepare for the week, and again on Wednesday. And as I said, the second test could be used as a diagnostic tool if one is at home and they believe it's necessary to test. So how are we going to have families opt in? Well, most families have opted in already to the symptomatic testing program. I'll talk about that in a moment. But the diagnostic testing program is new and families and staff members have to opt into it. And we've decided to use our existing platform, the health attestation, to do this. So we're going to push out next Tuesday afternoon to families, information on their cell phone or computer, allowing them to opt in. 18-year-old students can opt in themselves. We're going to do this next Tuesday afternoon, get that information, and prepare the kits for distribution next week, next Thursday and Friday. I'll go over timeline in a moment. It will look like the health attestation you receive in the morning, and you will continue to receive the health attestation in the morning. That won't change. You'll get an email and you'll get a text. It's going to be a one-time thing for families to receive it. We'll send it out again for those who either didn't respond or responded no and may want to change their mind. But those who respond yes, they want to participate, that's it, they won't receive another one. Everyone, however, will continue to receive their morning health attestation form. This tool helps us manage this a little bit more closely and smoothly with everything else we have going on. And I think it's important to emphasize that the health attestation in the morning will remain as is, and we want folks to continue to fill that out. When you opt in for families, it means three things. One, that you have read and understood the training materials, there'll be a video that's included, that you will test on Sunday and Wednesday, and that you will share positive results only with the school. Now, I want to say again about the Wednesday. Families and staff have to make individual decisions about where they are and what's going on with their child's health and may use that tool differently depending on where their child's at. We need everyone to do it on Wednesday. We want everyone to do it, we need everyone to do it on Sunday. We want everyone to do it on Wednesday, and we want people to have some flexibility based on the circumstances in their household. Regarding the symptomatic testing program, staff and students can participate in this program. What this means is that students who display symptoms during the school day will be assessed by the school nurse, as they are now, and if it's appropriate, they'll be tested. Positive individuals will be sent home and they'll be tested by the CIC staff. Positive individuals will be sent home, and they'll be tested by the CIC staff. It's possible a student could test negative and still be asked to go home, because the student's just simply not feeling well. That happens right now anyhow. So we are going to work with our nurses in partnership with CIC and in cooperation with their families to make sure that students who are not feeling well, we're deciding who needs to be tested, and some may not, the nurse may determine that they really don't need a test on that day. It just might be nerves. It might be something else going on with their child, and a test is not necessary. Again, to participate, families will sign up on the CIC portal, and families will get all of this information in an email from me by Monday morning. If families have already signed up on the CIC portal, and 70% of our families have, they don't need to do anything. If they would now like to opt in, they can do that. And if families now would like to opt out, they can do that too. So what happens next? For our staff, we're going to have our staff opt in, and that's only a one-time event, this week, and they'll receive their at-home test at the end of this week. And we're going to kind of soft-launch, if you will, with our staff this Thursday, this Friday. And then families next week will, will opt in and receive their first test kit on or about the, the 4th of February, and then each week thereafter. The symptomatic testing begins the week of February 7th, not necessarily on February 7th, but that week. However, contact tracing will end on February 7th. So a timeline for this is, just kind of restating this a little differently, we're going to distribute at-home tests to staff this Friday. By Monday, we will ask families to opt into both programs, and we're really encouraging families to opt into both programs, believing it's an important tool and tools to keep our schools safe. On February 4th, we are going to send the tests home with students in backpacks. Students will bring them back home. If there is a family member or parent who believes that that just will not work for their child, they'll be able to contact the school and, and pick up that test. But we want to keep the, we want to keep this distribution as simple as possible and rely on those students who frequently bring iPads home, or Chromebooks and, and other materials. Students then on Sunday, the 6th, will take their first at-home tests, and again, only reporting on positives. And then on February 9th, we want to begin symptomatic testing. We don't want to begin on Monday because, quite frankly, the nurses believe there'll be a lot of questions on Monday, the 7th, about the diagnostic test, and they're going to want to contact somebody, and we just don't want to confuse the issue, so we want to give it a couple of days and start the symptomatic testing on February 9th. And contact tracing and Test and Stay will have ended at that point as well. I think, lastly, what's really important for the community to know is a lot, things are changing all the time, and everything I just said, some of it could change tomorrow. I'm, I'm aware of that, although I'm, I'm hoping not. What remains the same is our commitment to health and safety, led by our Joint Committee on Health and Safety. The Health Attestation remains in place. Masking remains in place until it's feasible and safe to make masking optional. Hygiene ventilation, visitor protocols remain in place, and I can't emphasize enough, if you're not feeling well, stay home. That's the best thing I can suggest there. So with that, Madam Chair, still more moving parts and pieces. The thing I'm, I'm most pleased about, though, is that the tests have arrived. We are ready to deploy them and get these tests into the hands of our staff and students and provide an additional resource for them as we continue to move through the winter and into the spring and the rest of the year. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Andrea.
Thank you for this, and I think it's, it's a really wonderful step to be taking for this next phase. I'm just curious how, if a, if a student or staff member does have a positive result on the testing that they do at home, how do they report that to the school? Are they calling someone? Are they filling out a Google form? How is that going to be handled?
We began those conversations yesterday. Right now, they've been contacting the nurse directly by email. We were talking about potentially using a Google link for the information to still get to the nurse for student staff. It's to HR. Students, it's to the nurse. What our hope is, is that the protocols that we have provided to families in the last week will remain the same with some adjustments, so parents will be able to go back to the information that already exists and see a bit of the revisions as we move forward.
In addition to that, we expect, we have, again, through your support and some of the federal dollars, we've brought on board some folks who were doing contact tracing. We will keep, retain those folks, and we're, we're developing the idea of a call center for families as well, because, you know, these questions come up on Saturday morning, they come up on Monday night, and it isn't, I'm not suggesting that we're going to have a 24/7 call center working, but that we want to have, we, we can redeploy our resources to take some of the burden, significant part of the burden, off of our school nurses so that others who are knowledgeable can respond and provide some, some answers for families in a timely way.
Liz.
All right. Thank you again for all of the new information. Two, I think, simple questions. The first is, has DESI said how long they will be providing families with, with testing kits? Is there some sort of a timeframe on it? And then, last week, I think it was, I asked about a threshold, if there was a threshold number of people signed up to participate, or if it mattered what percentage actually participated. I guess you can't really track that, but I'm just wondering if there's a answer to that question, too.
Regarding the first, the, DESI has said that, at this point, they're committed to providing tests through mid-April, late April. Now, we also will make a decision about purchasing additional tests so that we can continue with the, with what we hope will be a routine of, of a test kit per week. We need to, it, it'll be a bit of a, you know, chicken and the egg. We want to see how many people actually opt in so that we are not unnecessarily ordering tests that we will not use. They do have a, you know, a shelf life, too, so we want to be careful about that. So I think in the next week or so, we'll have a sense. We, right now, have sufficient tests for every student, every staff member, and for every town employee as well. So for, for the, for the next three weeks. I don't think that we will have everyone take us up on this offer, so that with the, with the state's supply means that I think we have a sufficient supply for a while, and we'll watch that carefully and, and order from our vendor as we decide, you know, where, where this is going and how, if you will, many people opt into it. If, we, we've received approval to participate in this program, and so we're participating in it, and we hope we have a high participation rate. But the, the threshold, and as far as I know, there's not a threshold from DESI saying that, you know, if you only have 10% participating, you know, you're out of luck. We have to make a commitment, which we've made. We have to provide the resources, which we will do, and then we're offering this program for, for everyone.
Erin.
Thank you, Dan. Thanks for the presentation. The slides were really clear and excellent, and so I hope, first of all, as a comment, that we can, you know, this packet was not in our packet, so that it can be on the website, that it can be maybe linked on our new Facebook page, and maybe linked in your email. I think that visual charting style is very easy for people to understand. Then I wanted to just add maybe two things that maybe we could add as information. One is what Andrea just brought up, which is what should people do if on a Sunday or a Wednesday they have a positive test? You know, maybe we could have a list of the emails they should contact, or just whatever the procedure is. And then the second thing I was wondering about, which I don't think we addressed tonight yet, is, you know, we had some confusion over the two different quarantining protocols previously, depending on whether the positive contact was in school or out of school. So I'm just curious if we know or can say, what is our protocol going to be for quarantining positive people if it's at these home tests on Sunday and Wednesday? And maybe if we could add that information once we have it to this slide.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great, that's a great point. We, we know, we, we want to attach a, a little bit of an FAQ, but keep it as simple as possible, maybe just with links that people can go to if they're interested in that question, so it's not so overwhelming that people just turned off by it. But your last question is a good one, because we're, we're now kind of, we're in a place where we're dismantling some of the structures that we've had in place, and we have to explain that, and, and people want to know. So it, I think it'll be a little awkward initially as we try to get our legs around this, and, and that kind of feedback will be really, really helpful. We will get this up. I'll make sure that, Madam Chair, you have this link, so you can post it. I will include it in the email I send the staff tomorrow, and also to families next week, so they can kind of take a look at it, along with other information.
I do just want to add, just because I know every day, as, as a staff member or a family member, you're looking for that information, especially when it hits home and now you're in it. So if you, the, the, the hope is that we continue to use the same information that we have out there now, which absolutely should be linked to the information Dan just presented. So going on to the health page of the website, when you find that link to the COVID protocol updates for families and students, that's where the information will sit in regards to quarantine, in regards to now symptomatic testing, in regards to who to notify if you do pop positive.
So that will be on the website. It'll be in the email. We'll post it on our Facebook page. Liz.
Just one other thought I had would be that you could offer a recorded video of a simplified version of what you just showed us, and then including Erin's pieces of information, which is another easy way to get information out to people.
Yeah, we, we are going to include, I, I'm going to do a 10-minute video with a couple of folks to try to explain some of this, and include that as another option for people to, to look at. So we'll endeavor to get the information as clearly out as we can. It's, honestly, to me, sometimes it's as clear as mud, and I can only imagine for families and, and staff, you know, how to, how to sort through this. But I, in a way, I, I feel that we're, again, we're dismantling some things to try to make this a little easier, and we're putting the surveillance testing that people have asked about into their hands. And we, I think, in the end, that will be a, a good thing, along with the other things that we need to do.
Overall, it seems a simpler approach than we've been able to have previously. I, it's still going to be complicated, but it still seems simpler. Other questions or comments? Matt? Shaking his head. On we go to yet another change, but it seems a good one. And if you haven't looked at the video that Dan, you sent out in our packet, Dr. Shaw, that's very helpful. You probably have all looked at that. And I just want to reiterate that we're grateful to the Select Board and the Town Manager for supporting the funds which are providing the tests that the school department has purchased. They talked about it and thought about it long and hard. Dan's presentation was good. Tim McDonald was there as well, and we're glad that they were able to support this. Anything else on this topic? We can then move into an action item, just a paltry little thing, which is our fiscal year '23 school operating budget recommendation. Dr. Goodkans.
Before I make the recommendation, just a couple of points here. You have a summary of the revised and proposed budget. The, the essential change was the addition of a 1.0 personal counselor for Needham High School, as discussed. And so that is all in there, which makes it a, just over an $87.2 million request. Thanks to Mike O'Brien, who pointed out that in one or two spots within the budget document itself, there's reference to the Hillside School. That is something that was an oversight on my part, and included, you know, kind of the historical legacy of Hillside. So while that is not cleaned up for your vote, you're voting a number, the document that Town Meeting will consider, we will make sure that that is scrubbed and, and appropriately cleaned up. So with that, Madam Chair, and after a lot of conversations with the School Committee, going back, frankly, through August, when you discussed priorities, and more recently with Finance Committee members and your liaisons, it is my recommendation that the Needham School Committee approves the FY '23 school operating budget in the amount of $87,277,798 as submitted.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Liz. Discussion. Erin.
Just briefly, we've discussed this budget a lot. I just wanted to say that it's a fantastic addition to maintain that guidance counseling resource at the high school, so I'm glad to see that in there. I think also, overall, this budget adds resources that are desperately needed and really being used already in the schools, using temporary funding, both for the challenges of coming out of COVID, and also in special education areas. So I strongly support it. I think as we go forward, both in other committees and in Town Meeting, it will be important to explain why we are adding headcount at a time when the enrollment is down, but I think there is a great story to be told there that we've discussed here many times, and I'm definitely going to vote yes.
Very important. It looks like Andrea's going to...
I just want to second what Mr. Pressman said. I wholeheartedly support this, and I'm thrilled that we are voting to add back or, or maintain that counseling position at the high school. And I just wanted to make a comment that I think this is the first, we've always had equity, certainly in the last several years, at the forefront of, of this, but this is the first year where I feel like it was very directly and explicitly linked in the budget in a way that it hasn't been before, and I just think that that's, that's a really nice change to see, and it makes me feel even better about supporting this budget.
Agreed, agreed. Other questions or comments? So true, both of those. Basically, somewhat quickly, one of the reasons that headcount goes up, even though enrollment is down, is enrollment is spread across the school system. So there's not one class at Newman and one class at Broadmeadow that don't need to be, have a classroom next year, or have a teacher. They're spread across the school system, and some additional needs because of coming out of COVID and making sure that our students, all of our students can succeed and move forward. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll come into the vote, and this will be a roll-call vote, because Matt is on the, on Zoom, so we'll start with Andrea.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Aye.
Erin.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
And I'll say, I bet Dylan would vote yes if he could. Matt?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so we have a 7-0-0 vote. Much appreciated, all of the, the huge amount of work that goes into this, and the careful decisions made to make this money go as far as it can and be used as sufficiently as possible for the benefit of our students and our staff, to move us forward as a school district and hopefully out of the pandemic. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Now we'll work on the communication. School Committee comments? Any comments from anyone here tonight? We've had a number of very rich, full meetings, and this one qualifies as that. I hear, we have none. Just want to congratulate Dylan and his colleagues again, and then we will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Moved by Michael.
Second.
Second by Mike. Again, we'll take a roll-call vote, starting with Andrea.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Liz. Erin.
Aye.
Aye.
And Matt?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. We will adjourn this 20, this January 25th meeting of the Needham School Committee, and we'll see you next week.